I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. This is a public hearing in order for our citizens to make comments on the county's advertised estate, real estate tax rate of eighty-nine cents per hundred dollars assessed value, and advertised personal property tax rate of two dollars and fifty-five cents. The real estate tax rate represents two-cent increase from the current rate, and the personal property tax rate represents ten-cent, a ten-cent increase from the current rate. The Board of Supervisors voted to advertise a minimum tax rate of eighty-nine cents for real estate and two dollars and fifty-five cents for personal property. The Board of Supervisors may approve a rate at or below this rate. It cannot go higher. In order to approve a higher rate for real estate or personal property, we would be required to re-advertise and hold another public hearing. A second public hearing will be held at approximately six-thirty PM or at the close of this hearing with regard to the advertised budget. I will call the names, I will call the name of a speaker and the next speaker on the list who should also come forward to be prepared to speak. Please come to the podium, state your name, address using the microphone, and you will have five minutes. Please direct your comments to the Chair and members of the Board and not to the audience and staff. This is our time to listen to you. We will not be answering questions during these hearings. We ask that the audience refrain from clapping and commenting between speakers so that we may clearly hear the next speaker. Please leave any written statements with our clerk. If you plan to speak and have not signed up, and you have not signed up at the table in the lobby, please do so at this time. We will begin now with the first speaker, and that's Mr. Nelson Price. And following Mr. Price is Sue Farrar. Is Mr. Price ready? I do not see Mr. Price. Ms. Farrar? And following this, oh, I'm sorry. I have one comment I gotta make first. Mr. Gabriel is not here this evening. He had some illness in his family, and he had to attend to his family this evening.
Can you hear me?
The next speaker will be Gary Fissell. After you, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Sue Farrar, Executive Director of the Montgomery Museum. A year ago, I came to you begging, asking for extra money for us to help with the repair of our roof of our one-hundred-and-sixty-one-year-old building. You were gracious and granted us a five-thousand-dollar amount. It seems that the money we have raised is not quite enough. The bids came in quite high, so we're still working, and I was sorry that I couldn't come and report to you tonight that the roof is underway. The expectation is that we will be starting the process early in September. So, we're working hard, and we're on our way, and we thank you for your support. I also want to thank you for your continued support through our Challenge Grant. We count on your encouragement and your support to operate on a daily basis, and we just wanted to tell you that we appreciate the support that you give us.
Gary Fissell, Gary Fissell, please. And following Mr. Fissell will be Barbara Skinner.
Hi, I'm Gary Fissell. I live in Christiansburg. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. Last year, you all raised taxes by twelve cents, and after much discussion and falling to the wonderful prosperous citizens of Blacksburg, they got a new high school that old one could probably been rebuilt. But I'm not gonna stand here and beat that dead horse. And again, this year, you all want to raise taxes again. Now, think about this for a second. If you all had raised taxes modestly in the years prior to last year, we wouldn't be in the hole that we're in now, a gradual rate increase. When times are good and money's flowing, yeah, it's very easy to, it's very easy to lower taxes. But I'm not here to bash your tax increase. I am here because I'm for it. I want you to go for this tax rate increase. And so many cuts have been made by the county. The county is lucky to have so many employees, and as a citizen, I'm happy with the services I receive from this county. When layoffs occur, more workload is put on other employees, and they're not compensated for that. Potholes are rampant in the county at this time. Come springtime, our storm drains are gonna be flooding these streets again. Why? Because there's debris inside those manholes, soccer balls, leaves, sticks, anything. We don't have manpower or the equipment to get it done right now. Every time a teacher is laid off, it hurts our students. It creates a larger class size. As far as closing schools, that is absolutely ridiculous. If I was a teacher, I would never apply for a job to teach in southwest Virginia with all this going on. But here's a question for you. How come we don't have a music program for our fifth and sixth graders, and they have to wait till junior till middle school to come in? Just a thought. No more cuts. This could be a motto that this Board accepts today and adopts, even if you're afraid of not getting re-elected. And furthermore, there probably is not enough money in our rainy day fund. Salaries really suck for our, for our teachers. And our public works employees and all workers, they work their butts off for us. School safety is a national concern, and this county needs a good, hard safety check. Tea partners want cuts. Where is this safety check gonna come from? Not out of their pockets, it's gonna come from the tax dollars. Stop cutting and restore some of these cuts. Stick to your guns tonight, and raise this and prayerfully think about raising these taxes. I'm tired about hearing all these tea party gripes. If you're gonna gripe, go say something, say something worthwhile. Come up with a solution. Don't make a problem. Now, if I've offended anybody here, I'm sorry. But quit griping and come up with a solution. Thank you for your attention tonight. My name is Gary Fissell, and I'm proud to say I live in Christiansburg, Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Fissell. And Ms. Skinner. And following Ms. Skinner is Sharon Brockman.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Skinner, and my address is thirty-five eighty-three Laurel Drive in Blacksburg. In January, I spoke before this Board, and I said that I felt that Montgomery County Public Schools could save millions of dollars by increasing class sizes, decreasing administration, and using a better but less costly inclusion model for special education. Since then, I've read an article in the Roanoke Times that Roanoke County Schools have seen a decrease of funding since two thousand and eight of fourteen million dollars. Superintendent Lorraine Lang said, quote, "We've learned to do with less," unquote. Another article from the Roanoke Times reported that about eighty-three percent of the Roanoke County School budget goes to personnel costs. In contrast, MCPS personnel costs consume eighty-eight point five percent of our budget. If we were to reduce our personnel costs to the eighty-three percent level, we could realize a savings of five million dollars. If we were to reduce personnel costs to eighty percent, the national average, we could save seven point eight-two million dollars. In another Roanoke Times article, we see that Virginia Heights Elementary School in Roanoke, which was built in nineteen twenty-two, will be undergoing renovation and expansion this summer at a cost of two-point-five million dollars. If more space is needed in the future, they have plans for further classroom expansion. Why is it that in the February twenty-eighth School Board's Special Session on Capital Projects, when the Board discussed four much younger buildings in Christiansburg, schools built in the fifties, sixties, and seventies, we were told to prepare for recap prices of around seventy million dollars or new building expenses of around ninety-five million dollars? By the way, when I attended the unveiling of plans for the new Blacksburg High School, I was told by the lead architect that the price would be fifty million. Now it's sixty-two million dollars. Apparently, the building was expanded to provide for increases in student enrollment. However, figures I've seen show population declines in Blacksburg, but a lot of growth in Christiansburg. Is Blacksburg High going to be like Prices Fork Elementary? PFE was built with a capacity of six-hundred-and-fifty students, and after paying over eighty-thousand dollars for a redistricting plan and moving only one-hundred-and-twenty-two students, we now have three-hundred-and-forty-eight students in attendance there. The projected, projected attendance for the fall of twenty-twenty-one at Prices Fork Elementary School is for even fewer, three-hundred-and-twenty-eight students. Maybe our expenses skyrocket because years after the collapse of the Blacksburg High Gym, we still don't properly address the funding and maintenance. Going back to the February twenty-eighth School Board meeting, the price for annual routine maintenance is given as two million dollars per year. This does not include the eleven million in maintenance to cover deficiencies, which we're told we'll need over the next five years. I see no place where the funding of maintenance is currently being addressed. Perhaps maintenance will be discussed at the Joint Board of Supervisors and School Board Meeting in April, but that's a bit late in my opinion. Now, I'm as concerned about quality as I am about spending. While Roanoke County has seen a tightened belt in recent years, they're outscoring us on SOLs. Superintendent Blackburn recently prepared a study on middle school scheduling which showed Roanoke County besting MCPS in ten out of eleven SOL tests. In math, the difference between the two districts were striking and quite significant. For example, at the eighth grade level, the percent passing the math SOL was seventy-four percent in Roanoke County, but only thirty-eight percent in Montgomery County. Later, I built some customized student SOL reports on the VDOE website installed that the Roanoke County scores as a whole are superior to MCPS scores. It seems that Montgomery County has a math problem both in our schools and in local government budgeting. I've been observing the budget process for three years, and I've seen the Board of Supervisors struggle each year to allocate as much money as possible for our schools. I'm sure you all think you're supporting education by doing so. Unfortunately, handing over dollars without monitoring the efficiency and effectiveness of usage is far from optimal for our children, and it's seriously hurting many stretched taxpayers. We don't need higher taxes and more money. Instead, we need a better and smarter school budget. I personally think we need a citizens group to look into our school budgeting, but in any event, we need a thorough investigation of efficiency and effectiveness in our school spending. Please vote no on increasing our taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. And Sharon Brockman. And following Ms. Brockman will be Jim O'Dowd.
My name is Sharon Brockman. I live at seven-ten West Main Street, Christiansburg. Little did I know growing up in Montgomery County that speaking before the Board of Supervisors become an, at least annually, event for me. Yet on my computer, I see the letters I've sent you in the past, and once again tonight, I find myself before you, asking you one more time not to raise my family's taxes. Freedom increases responsibility is still the motto of Montgomery County. Some might interpret that as with an emphasis on the responsibilities the county has to provide, a justification for increasing the amount of money, quote-unquote, "needed" to provide services, but that would be an inaccurate interpretation. Montgomery County dates to seventeen seventy-six, the signature year for freedom and liberty, individual freedom and liberty. Our motto is an admonishment for individual personal responsibility, but rather, you've created an insidious circle. You tax more. The inevitable consequence of every tax increase is a loss of freedom. You must graciously relieve us of some of our responsibilities, and citizens with fewer responsibilities are inherently less independent, therefore more dependent upon you. A net loss of the very freedom we, or at least some of us, so treasurers Americans. Rather than upholding our county creed, you're instead undermining it as a foundation. But enough philosophizing. In two thousand and thirteen, we've already seen our take-home pay reduced by the end of the payroll tax holiday. Sitting on Governor McDonald's desk is a six-billion-dollar transportation bill. There's no way that bill can be implemented without an adverse impact on taxpayers. Everybody I know is being negatively affected by the ongoing implementation of Obamacare, combination of higher premiums and increased out-of-pocket costs, trends that only promise to worsen throughout the immediate future. Not too many years ago, on my annual pilgrimage to this meeting, I noted the price of a gallon of gasoline at two dollars and fifty-six cents, more than we'd ever paid before. What we wouldn't give for that now. Prices only go one way in the grocery store, and you don't need me to tell you which way that is. Taxpayers are always feeling the squeeze from the feds and the state even before you take aim at us. I've read several Montgomery County school officials lament their budget is smaller than years past. I ask, have you ever thought how many citizens are finding their real incomes also less than prior to the Great Recession? We all know what you did last year in terms of tax rates. I think it's perfectly reasonable to want to know if you're ever going to be satisfied. Last year's tax increase generated more revenue than you projected, and here you are advertising more increased rates again this year. Admittedly, I don't get to attend as many of these meetings as I might like or ought, but I was present for one a couple weeks ago, the night you set these advertised rates. As I sat listening to your discussion, I was struck at the absence of concern for the taxpayer footing these bills. Perhaps from this prior discussion, but as a taxpayer, I would have appreciated at least the mention of the possibility of operating Montgomery County in two thousand and thirteen without imposing another tax rate increase. The elephant in the room is school funding. I don't think we're talking about a tax increase in order to adequately fund public safety or to give the Sheriff's Department a decent office, which it so desperately needs. But so often, those of us opposed to tax increases are billed as being against quality education. That's simply not the case, because that's my three sons, much to their chagrin, I'm all about quality education. Suffice it to say tonight, the county gives the School Board a huge amount of money, certainly enough to run a quality school system. Furthermore, increasing funding of the school system is no guarantee that teachers will receive a raise, et cetera, as the board likes to remind you at every opportunity that they can spend its money any way they see fit. Remember the money for those buses a year or two ago? And of course, all this is predicated on the notion that the more money always equals a better education, an idea not universally accepted. Montgomery County has lots of debt, but we collect plenty of revenue as it is. I know a student who conducted a project to see four games were good indicators of personal spending habits. They weren't. This isn't, people were much more conservative with their own money. This isn't monopoly money we're talking about here either. One person commented personal property tax increase would only probably be about ten or twenty dollars per vehicle, but we're not talking just about twenty dollars here. Taxpayers have already taken hits from multiple angles. The phrase being nickled and dimed to death isn't for naught, so I ask you not to tighten your grip around the neck of Montgomery County's golden goose, its hard-working taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Brockman. Mr. O'Dowd. And following Mr. O'Dowd is Jack Sokolovich.
My name is Jim O'Dowd, and I live at twenty-four thirty-one Monte Barode in Blacksburg. I spoke before you last year in favor of the twelve-cent tax increase. In addition to attending many of your meetings, I've attended those of the School Board and spoken at length with their individual Board members and administrators. There is no fat left to trim their budgets, and their needs are great. In two thousand, the tax rate in Montgomery County was sixty-eight cents. If one adjusts that for inflation, that figure becomes ninety-two cents in two thousand and thirteen. That's a five-cent increase from where we are today. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of a two-cent tax increase, but I would also support a five-cent tax increase. The fiscal situation in which this county finds itself is analogous to a swimmer that has been attempting to swim close to shore, but starts floundering when an undercurrent pulls them out to deeper waters. As there not had been much long-term planning, this county did not have the strength to withstand the undercurrent. You spent an enormous amount of energy last year and demonstrated courageous and responsible political leadership to get closer to the shore. Five cents would get you back to solid ground and provide a measure of security. Two cents will get you back to shallower waters, and at least it would get you closer to the model of incrementally raising tax rates each year in keeping with the vision of long-term fiscal management that I've heard many of you espouse over the past year. Please support at least a two-cent tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Dowd. And Mr. Sokolovich. And he'll be followed by Susan Marmagas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Seems like we just saw each other yesterday.
That's right.
I'm Jack Sokolovich. I live on High Rock Hill Road down in Pilot. I'm at the bottom of the county. Here we are once again going through the annual budget drama. How much has changed since last year? We, the taxpayers, are now paying twelve cents more a year than a year before. You have removed one-point-four-million dollars from the pockets of the taxpayers of Montgomery County, dollars that could have been spent at local shops and restaurants, spending that would have generated sales tax receipts, meals tax receipts, and new car purchases. Instead, we've seen the decline in new car purchases and the closing of retail stores and restaurants. Even a local icon like Grandma's just up the street from this very building. Now, six more people are out of work, folks who have bills to pay, folks who no longer can afford to shop and eat out, folks who no longer pay income tax. These are part of the unintended consequences of removing millions of dollars from the taxpayers' budgets. You removed a million dollars to build a much-needed animal shelter, yet the dolled-in cats are still residing in the same dilapidated structure with absolutely no progress reported. That million dollars now sits alongside the other four-point-one-five-five million dollars in reserve funds. You've told us that keeping these reserve funds makes us look good for the banks and commercial lenders, but if we're not gonna borrow money for the next five to seven years, why does that matter now? Our revenue growth, growth of two-point-eight-million dollars this year alone could easily replenish those reserves, and our reserves continue to grow year after year. If you're not gonna build a shelter, then use that million dollars for the general budget and don't raise our taxes this year. Every time you take a dollar from the taxpayer, you take a piece of their freedom away, just like the lady before spoke. That dollar is now in the hands of government to spend as you folks deem appropriate. You get to decide which charities and organizations are important. The taxpayer loses his and her freedom to decide where to spend that money. I ask you again to please consider the civilian taxpayers of this county. When our insurance goes up, our premiums go up nine percent like the public employees went up, yet we have to pay out of our own pockets. When the county and School Board covers the entire insurance increases, that's tantamount to giving the employees a raise. Please have some compassion for the taxpayers. We are taxed enough already, and that's what the Tea Party stands for, taxed enough already. We urge the members of the Board of Supervisors to carefully go over the figures presented to you by the staff, including all reserves, carryovers, and revenues collected in excess of estimates as your forms indicate, before you decide to set a higher tax rate on our citizens. We expect you to be our fiscal stewards. We expect you to work for the citizens of this county, show us you care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sokolovich. Susan, please, and then after Susan, we have Susan Mayorga.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here, Chairman Politis, and the members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Susan Marmagas, and I live at three-oh-five Rucker Road in Blacksburg. I'm a mom of two young girls, one of whom is a student in first grade at Harding Avenue Elementary. I moved back here seven years ago in large part because of the excellence of our schools, and I got involved because I found out that my daughter's school was potentially gonna get closed last year. So for the last twelve months, you've seen a lot of me. I've come to a lot of meetings, and a group of us across the county have formed citizens to save our schools, an emphasis to really involve parents to be partners with you and the School Board in finding more resources for our county schools. We recognize it's a two-pronged approach. We need state funding, we need local funding, and the most important thing we can do at the state and local level is fund our education. So I stand in support of this tax increase to support local schools, but I also want to say that we, as parents, have gone to Richmond and taken a letter to the state delegation from this county. We've got two-hundred-and-seventy-eight parents to sign that letter, and we've gotten responses from our state delegation. So we recognize that it's a state problem too, and but until we get more state revenue, it's up to the locality to raise the money we need to raise to keep the excellence in our school system. As you, as many of you know, I work in public health, and this week, on the front page of the Roanoke Times, the county health rankings came out. We are sixteenth in a hundred-and-thirty-three counties in the state on our health status. That is great news. We are a white beacon in a, in a pool of dark blue in this part of the state. One of the largest predictors of health is education, so let's not cut our education because not only does that cut education for our kids, but it also impacts our public health and many other things that we need in this county. So I stand here once again to ask for this tax increase. We continue to need it, but we're also partners with you to find more resources at the state and federal level. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. And next is Susan Mayorga, and following Susan will be Mike Riggs.
I got put on the wrong list. But just hold this thought for the next, next hearing following, starting in five minutes. My name is Susan Mayorga. I live at one-eighty-five Melody Drive in Christiansburg, and I'm still a case manager of Brain Injury Services representing New River Valley area, based out of Blacksburg. And I come here tonight to thank you for your support of our services to, to help the people with brain injury, brain injuries in Montgomery County. But I'm also here to request that you consider our request for twenty-five-hundred dollars in the coming budget. Twenty-five-hundred dollars represents about ten percent of our cost to support the brain injury survivors that we now serve in Montgomery County. This request helps us in our role as a vital link between the folks with brain, that are brain injury survivors, and the ways to make them more independent and more integrated into their community. Imagine for a moment going to bed tonight, successful professional, and you wake up tomorrow morning and you can't feel one side of your body. A person approaches you quickly and touches your arm, and you don't know who they are, but they say they're you, that they are your daughter. You can't remember how to brush your teeth, but you clearly remember teaching your son how to do that. For the next six months, or perhaps for the rest of your life, you will now rely on others for some or most or all of your basic living skills. You have just now had an unexpected acquired brain injury. One-point-seven-million people sustain a TBI in the United States every year, and three-point-one-million people live with a lifelong disability as a result. There are not a lot of support for brain injury survivors, but here in Montgomery County, we continue to successfully make a difference in their ability to integrate into their families and communities and to fulfill their service potential. Some examples of how we've done that right here in Montgomery County in the past year. We've provided technology to a person who has been unable to read or write since having a stroke. Now, with provision of a computer and a scanner, they're allowed to read their own mail. They're also allowed to communicate via, via writing by utilizing the dictation feature on their computer. That person now is considering going back to school. Another survivor has been picked up with assistance with employment for the first time since the brain injury over seven years ago has been steadily employed by the same person for over a year. Currently, we're helping another person get admission to a residential facility right here in Montgomery County that specializes in brain injury. The survivor, the survivor will stay close to home, but also receive the intensive therapy and constant supervision and support that they need, while also allowing to provide alleviation of caregiver burnout from their family, to, to, to preserve that family relationship, and also allow that caregiver to tend to their business, which is also located here in Montgomery County. So each, each brain injury survivor has their own story, their own experience, and their own goals, and Brain Injury Services of southwest Virginia consistently provides knowledge, resources, but most of all, hope. And this hope is tailored to each person individually, but there's an overarching goal to allow them to be full participants in their communities, and that is something that is vital to both Montgomery County as well as the survivors. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Riggs. Mike Griggs, and he'll be followed by Laura Russ.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Mike Griggs, and I stand before the Montgomery County Board as a citizen of the county in support of funding public education through our county taxes. I have four daughters, three of which are currently enrolled in elementary school in Montgomery County. Over the last few years, I've learned more about the school budget numbers. The most telling number is the cost per pupil in Montgomery County. It's still below 10% of the state average, which is telling. Unfortunately, the Montgomery County school system is simply underfunded. And you can look at all the numbers and where the money's going, but unfortunately, it's underfunded. So I support this tax increase. Over 200 years ago, our founding fathers were fighting for their freedom and at the same time, rising up a nation that they hoped would stand the test of time. They all agreed on the basic founding principles of our nation, which we all know and appreciate today, with the responsibility to general education being extremely important to all of them. John Adams, Noah Webster, the father of American Scholarship in Education, and our own Thomas Jefferson, who studied at William &amp; Mary and went on to found University of Virginia, didn't just look at general public education as a burden of government, but as an essential duty by a governing body. They realized that for society to advance and to support itself, it was extremely important that it be educated. Many of our founding fathers spoke on multiple occasions about sparing no expense to public education. There is no doubt that one of the primary reasons for the success of our nation as a country and society today is due to the education fundamentals that were put in place over 200 years ago by the Tea Party. Today, we are faced with the difficult task of funding our local governments to support the many county functions, of which public education is one of the most important. With budget balancing in Washington, federal funding is being reduced, as well as funding from the state. Therefore, the burden of educating local children falls to the county, which it rightly should. The Montgomery County School Board and Board of Supervisors should feel a strong obligation to uphold the principles of our founding fathers in regards to properly, sufficiently, and adequately fund public education. When we lose that money from the Fed, as well as from the state, we have to make it up somewhere else. And that's what we do in the county. Others here will argue that the tax increase at the county level for education is unacceptable right now. I say it would be completely unacceptable for us to do anything but adequately fund public education, sparing no expense as our founding fathers intended. We would be failing our children if we provided them with a substandard education full of half-funded programs. Instead of dropping the torch for public education that Thomas Jefferson passed on, I ask you to carry it with strength and confidence, lift it up high as a beacon of light to ensure that the future of our children is brighter than today. Thank you.
Thank you. And Laura will be Lindsey West.
Hi, I'm Laura Russ, and I live at 1560 Harding Road in Blacksburg. Thanks for giving me the chance to speak this evening. I really had no awareness of school and county budgets or arguments about local tax increases until last spring, when it became clear that my children's school, Harding Avenue Elementary in Blacksburg, faced a very real threat of being closed if the county didn't chip in more money for public education. However, as I've become more involved in this process, participating in and observing both the school board's side of things and the Board of Supervisors, I've been shocked to learn how close all of our county schools are to disaster. I think that most parents, and even more so citizens of our county who don't currently have kids in school, are probably, like I was before, unaware of how critical our schools' needs are. Most people don't realize how close our kids are to doing without things that we would consider essential, from sports teams, to art and music, to field trips, to Title I funding, and right down to the very schools that are the center of their world. Our school administrators, teachers, and staff have done wonders in providing our kids with an excellent education despite an inadequate budget that keeps on shrinking and shrinking. They've made tough decisions, and as we've said before, trimmed all the fat they can find, and there's nothing more that they can cut that won't have serious negative effects on our children. We know that far from keeping up with inflation and population growth, contributions from the state and federal governments are declining drastically. So unfortunately, it falls to local governments to pick up the burden. And so I'm here tonight to ask you to support the tax increases in the proposed 2014 budget, which will go far towards ensuring the future survival of our excellent county schools. Just a few points in support of the tax increases. As we've heard many times, and as we all know, and I certainly know this when I go grocery shopping every week, our costs are going up. Our families' costs are going up. Groceries, gas, our kids' clothes. I'm patching jeans more than I ever have in my life. But the costs to run the schools go up too, every year with inflation, just like our families' costs go up. How can schools be expected to provide the same services to our children for the same budget, which is actually less in real dollars? Tax rates are less now, when adjusted for inflation, than they were 10 or 15 years ago. The tax increases that have been proposed would still be below the rate in 2,000 in real dollars. Opponents of increasing funding for our public schools, and opponents of tax increases in particular, have tried their best to pit one part of our county against another. We've all heard the arguments that funding for education benefits Blacksburg but not other parts of this county. However, although, as I said, I got into this debate because my own children's school was threatened, as I think any parent probably would, increased funding for education would benefit all of our county schools and all of our county's children. In fact, is probably most critical for those kids from less advantaged communities. For example, we all know about the federal sequester. This means that Title I funding to our schools will decrease. So it's up to us as a community to help the poorest students in our county in places like Reiner, Shawsville, Price's Fork, Bellevue, and yes, Blacksburg too, and ensure that they continue to receive a good education. Finally, it's been suggested that since this past fiscal year has been a relatively good one for the county, we should now live within our means and not raise taxes. However, it should be abundantly clear from all the budgetary scrambling that's been going on, that it's time for our county to do some serious planning for the future, especially when it comes to schools, which is such a large portion of our budget. We know, for example, that there are major capital expenses coming down the road for our schools, particularly in the Christiansburg Strand, which needs new buildings as well as major renovations. The 2 cents tax increase would allow us to put money in reserve to fund future capital expenditures for the schools. Furthermore, our county's population is growing now and is expected to continue to grow over the next 10 years. And to provide all those kids with a good education, we need a plan for future funding. The proposed tax increases would help provide a solid source of revenue for public education down the road, so that the programs and schools that are so important to our kids aren't threatened with cutting year after year, and the buildings where they are educated don't fall down around their ears. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Laura. Lindsey West, I don't know if she's here. Ah, there she is. And following Ms. West is Catherine Kincaid.
Good evening, Chairman Politis and members of the Board of Supervisors. For the record, I'm Lindsey West, and I live at 607 Giles Road in Blacksburg. For 50 years, I have been a strong supporter of schools and of quality public services and of the resources to pay for those services. I know that for Montgomery County to continue to grow and prosper, they need to provide the services and they need to provide the funds to keep up with the needs of all of the county citizens. In the years that I was on your Board of Supervisors for 12 years, and the many other boards I've served on, it was my pleasure to be able to help provide those resources, whether they were in actual dollars, or whether they were in people, or allocation of money and resources, and volunteer support. I think probably you all get a lot of the same kind of reward from being able to help county citizens. I commend you for your work on the board. Increasingly, the responsibility for Montgomery County citizens falls on the locality. And we all know that for a growing and prosperous county like Montgomery, to remain that way, we need to provide the services and we need to come up with the dollars to be able to do that. Thank you for advertising the rate the county administrator has recommended for the personal property and estate taxes and the budget as recommended. I urge you to support that budget, to vote for the tax rate, and for the budget as recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. West. Catherine Kincaid, and following Ms. Kincaid is Tom Zuckerwar.
Hello, I'm Catherine Kincaid, and I'm here to read a letter written by Bill Stevenson. Bill is emeritus dean of engineering at Virginia Tech and a former PTA president at Blacksburg Middle School. Dear members of the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, let me begin by thanking you for your service. Even though I do not agree with the political persuasion of some members, I do respect your willingness to serve. I regret that I will be unable to attend your meeting on March 26, 2013, but request that you take into consideration my views on the budget. Having suffered from the imposition of a 16% tax increase last year, I'm dismayed that you are proposing a further increase for the coming year. As I see it, you're not exercising sufficient control over the school board, which has an insatiable appetite for taxpayers' money. The board is frittering away its allocation in the mistaken belief that more dollars will lead to a better education for our children. I would argue that you should demand better outcomes and insist on larger class sizes, merit-based pay for teachers, changing the inclusion model so that there's less class disruption, thereby allowing teachers to teach classes comprised of children who can learn at a similar rate, reducing the administrative overhead in schools and elsewhere in the county units. You should also consider forming a Citizens Advisory Board to review our schools and determine why, despite lower class sizes and high-quality buildings, MCPS perform at a lower level in schools in surrounding counties. The Citizens Advisory Board should also review class offerings and weed out those with minimal academic content instead of minimum class size. As elected officials, I know some of you will argue that there is no need for Citizens Advisory Board, since the tasks proposed are your responsibility. If that's the case, then I simply ask you to do your job. The school board will not compile a sensible budget request unless they are directed to do so by fiscally responsible Board of Supervisors. Of course, I know that the majority of the board will continue to let the school board run rampant. However, the more you allocate, the more they will demand without ever considering quality or effectiveness. Already, one member of the school board is promoting free childcare for infants at three months old. This is utter nonsense, as several studies have proven. Head Start was a failure. So now, we will soon be asked to extend the concept and sink more money into a bottomless pit. Unless you take a firm stand now, Montgomery County will fall into severe financial distress in a few short years. Yours sincerely, Bill Stevenson, 1205 Arrington Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. And I'd just like to say on a personal note that I attended Virginia Heights Elementary School that was built in, I believe she said, 1922. And I went by it last Saturday, and it looked me to be in excellent condition from the outside. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kincaid. Mr. Zuckerwar, and he'll be followed by Joe Ivers.
Some would have you to believe that the bad weather and the snow on March 26 is the fallout from Montgomery County Public Schools. Some of the others in the audience would suggest that because of the recent real estate tax increases, we've seen less sales in automobiles and restaurants and merchandise at Walmart or Target. I would actually suggest that if law enforcement officials and teachers and administrators and employees of Montgomery County Public Schools and of Montgomery County received regularly and fair pay increases, they have more disposable income to go out and purchase automobiles and goods at Target and Walmart and eat at restaurants. So I'm not sure that that argument necessarily holds water. To that extent, I appreciate the opportunity to talk tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to attend one of the county conversations at the minor volunteer fire department. I'm going to keep my remarks rather short tonight, but in thinking about that event last week, I think it was the remarks from Mr. Brown. He said he had a constituent who said that he would rather have his house burned to the ground than pay taxes to support a county fire department. That same constituent said that he would rather die from a heart attack in his front yard than to pay taxes to support local EMS. And I've thought about that all week long, and I've thought, how do you reconcile an argument like that? And at the end of thinking about this for a week, I don't think you can. I can't. So the argument for me becomes, what is in the interest of the greater good? I think the answer to such a challenge and to such a problem is that the proposed budget increase, or the proposed budget as well as the real estate and personal property and tax increases are there to serve the greater good. The proposed budget and their increases will support the schools, the county operations. I support the budget and increases and encourage the board to adopt the budget and increases without modification. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Zuckerwar. Mr. Ivers, and following Mr. Ivers is A. Paul Thomas.
My name is Joe Ivers. I live in Blacksburg. Mr. Politis and Mr. Meadows, the Board of Supervisors, it's been very enjoyable working with you as a school board member over the last six years. But as a citizen, I do have some concerns. You, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, had conversations with the public on March 12th and on March 18th. At that time, I heard some of the supervisors indicate that the budget that was on the table that today would be the budget that will be on the table next month. Does this mean that that's the final budget? So why are we here? I'd like to think that as a citizen of Montgomery County, I would not be speaking to deaf ears or closed minds. I'm retired, I have a fixed income, as do most retirees. I pay my bills like everyone else. I pay my taxes, as does everyone else. And at times, I think things are tough. But not that tough. I want to introduce you to some of the neighbors, some of your neighbors. These neighbors are spread all over Montgomery County, and they have fixed incomes also. But their incomes range in the $700 bracket a month to the $1,700 bracket a month. More than likely, you won't know them. Many of them are the forgotten citizens, or the Montgomery County citizens who are all but forgotten. You see, I lead a grassroots, ecumenical group of men and women who volunteer to do home repairs for families in need throughout the county. My partner, I started this venture back in 2007. We repair leaky roofs, holes in floors, we build ramps, we repair porches and steps, doors, and so on. Volunteers have assisted in over 150 families. Our goal is to have every family in Montgomery County live in a warm, dry, comfortable, safe home. The things that we all take for granted. In the process of volunteering for all over the county, I've had the honor of meeting some truly wonderful people. The only difference is, between those people and us, is our good fortune and their misfortune. Here's what some of the families that we have assisted have had to say. Peggy in Christiansburg says she wants her grandchildren to have a better life than she's had, and the only way that that can happen is for a better education. Please do not cut education. Betty in Pitts says that same thing, that she wants that for her sons. Victor and Anita on Teal Road in Christiansburg want the same for their children. Phyllis wants the same for her grandchildren in Blacksburg Estates. Robert and Ellie in Mountain Creek Community in Ellison want the same. Linda on Five Points Road, Frances on Whipple Road in Blacksburg, Elizabeth and Clayton on Suffle, on Yellow Suffle Road, want the same for their three children, ages 11, 10, and 3. Don't cut the school budget. It will hurt our children. It'll hurt our grandchildren. Tommy in North Fork in Ellison, Pansy in Price's Fork, Rhonda and Bobby on Stone Keep, Frances and Reiner, Eric and April on Bryant Lane. They all agree that a better education is the answer. I could go on and on, but I think you get the message. I could go on and on, but I think you get the message. I spoke to James yesterday, he's a retired police officer who lives over on Depot. He said education of our young people is critical. James struggles with his monthly bills as we all do. He still thinks we need to do all we can to keep kids out of jail and on the right track. And he is, and this is through, excuse me, and this is through education, and that happens in our Montgomery County Public Schools. James agreed that $10,000 a year to educate a child is cheap compared to the $50,000 it would cost to keep that, an uneducated child, person in jail. The Reverend Robert Jones in Ellis Cave Road said that God and education are the two most important things anyone would have in their life today, and we must fund churches and we must fund our schools. If you haven't, if you don't know him, and you've ever had a chance to visit him, he's a wonderful man, with a great sense of humor. I haven't seen him in several months, I still hope he's in good health.
Thank you, Mr. Ivers, your time is up. A. Paul Thomas, and following Mr. Thomas is Kelly Pleasant.
How do you do? Hello. I wish to follow up some of those remarks by saying that I'm kind of glad that I'm not from Blacksburg, which means I have a somewhat more and broader understanding of what's going on in this county. I would say first of all that, to me, this kind of exchange where you're trying to find out the disposition of what people are thinking about in this county isn't exactly practical. Where you're sitting there and a few people are back here, what you, how you could do it better is to just individually get out and circulate amongst the people and even call on people at their homes to find out what people really are facing. I'd like to say something about the work of education. I sort of think that education, yes, is valuable, but it can also be dangerous. It can be one-sided. I think education, well, it comes from, I suppose, educare, which means to lead out, to lift up. The fact is that more money isn't always going to serve that end, and, you know, if only there could be a greater emphasis on character building, how much better off all the people would be if there were an adherence brought before the younger people of the value of truth, goodwill towards all, of the danger of stealing, cheating, of all the things that put people in trouble with the law and put them in prisons. And I believe if education could take up that cause, if it could be in Montgomery County, Montgomery County could be alight and be known all over the country as taking the right steps forward. But there have been a lot of causes that have limited education to the academic side. Well, could I say something concerning truth? We don't know too much about what's going on in schools and what is involved in the cost. Teacher salaries for one thing, who knows how much a teacher's salary amounts to? I don't. When teachers come forward and want increases in salary, my practical answer to that is, well, how much do you make now in dollar figures? And what are the perks that accompany the job? When I was teaching, I know about the summer vacation, which was one of the great perks of the job. You could go abroad, live somewhere else, do what you wanted to, to advance yourself. And there are other advantages too, fewer hours. You could go on with that. What about tenure? Tenure was big sometimes back. You had a lifetime job if you stayed a few years, you know. Well, I want to reach you about one thing. I prepared remarks, but I decided that my time would be up.
Your time is up, I'm afraid.
See, I shouldn't have just talked and talked.
Ms. Pleasant, and you'll be followed by Ms. Albritton.
Hi. Good evening. I am Kelly Pleasant. I live at 2737 Old Fort Road in Prices Fork in Blacksburg, and I'm here to speak to you tonight in support of the proposed budget and any tax increase it takes to fund it properly. Probably now more than ever, the future of our county depends on the safety of its citizens and the education of its youth. Montgomery County is growing, the needs of its citizens are changing. It is impossible to believe that this county can operate without an increased budget. In addition, education is becoming more complex, the demands on schools, teachers, and students are increasing, and in order for our schools to remain competitive in our region and state, we must continue to fund with 2013 standards. Educating children builds businesses by providing an educated labor force for today's competitive market. These students are the future of Montgomery County. Their proper education is the promise of our community to its children, all its children. Planning for the future makes good sense and is long overdue. Waiting for another emergency to react financially to is an unsound policy. This should be a common goal for citizens in all parts of Montgomery County, certainly not another polarizing issue. And I am an elementary school teacher, and I am the president of the Montgomery County Education Association, but I also am a taxpayer without children currently in the school system. My children both received excellent educations in Montgomery County Public Schools, and I support any funding that will ensure future classes of students will as well. Years of cuts have led to tough decisions in our school system. These challenges have been met by teachers, staff, and administrators until now, but not without sacrificing and postponing improvements still needed. We all know that budgets are tough and economic times are somewhat difficult. Still in this measure, we need to begin to put money back into a healthy and growing school system and prepare the children of Montgomery County for their futures. I consider this budget to be both balanced and fair. Thank you for your past support and for the opportunity to speak in support of this tax increase this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Albritton, and she'll be followed by Emre Vez Blais Wagonbrunner.
Mr. Tierman, administrator, members of the Board Supervisors, really appreciate your chance to allow us to speak, and I had my work done, so I'm a little fuzzy, but I'd like to correct one thing that was said, a quote from my friend, Bill Stevenson, about Head Start. Research is showing that Head Start is making a difference, that children from those communities who are attending Head Start actually have more of a chance to graduate high school. And so I did want to share that, I think that, and then I think you'll be happy to note in response to some comments by the gentleman, we do have, I think, a very powerful anti-bullying program now in the school system, as well as a great program called Pass It On. If you see someone doing something nice to somebody else, you pass on a little bracelet, and then you get a little bean, and if you get the most beans for passing on at the end of the week, you get an award. And I know the young men who started that program, they're tech students, and we're using it in our schools, and as a school board member, I'm extremely pleased. I'm also pleased and proud of our drama programs. Last weekend, I went to the Pride and Prejudice at Christiansburg High School, it was phenomenal. The weekend before that, I went to Blacksburg High School and saw senior high, seniors directing four different plays. Tonight is the All-County Band Program at Christiansburg High, and I hope to hear a little of that. We have a phenomenal school system, and yes, it wouldn't be if it weren't for our funding, because the state, as you know, has cut us back. How many million? Someone suggested to me 10 million. The state has cut Montgomery County over the last many, many years for public ed. And then you fine leaders can't really do much except tax the real estate. We've gotten a little bit on our two exits for meals and for hotels and for liquor, but again, someone mentioned taxing that. I know we can't at the county level tax those things throughout the county. So I really appreciate what you all are trying to do. I learned at your recent Ryder Community Meeting that in 1974, the decision was made to keep our four community school areas, called Strands, I don't like that term too well, but our community school areas. A decision was made to keep our four areas in 1974. That means we need to fund them. It was a public decision, and now we need to fund all of our schools. Many of our schools are much smaller than other schools, but we are committed to all of Montgomery County. So needless to say, we all must pay for all of our students in the schools. As we all know, Virginia is eighth wealthiest in the nation, and yet we have been docked as a county, self-amazingly, 10 million by our state legislature. I am very angry, as most of you know, about our Commonwealth's lack of commitment to public education and hearing from a previous speaker about our founding fathers and their commitment to education. I wish we could share that with our legislators. This makes it very difficult for you, I know. Please know how much I appreciate your commitment to our public schools and to all of our children. And I support the increases that you are proposing that will affect our whole county. With that decision made in 1974, let's support all of our schools, and I know there's not a lot more you can tax other than our real estate, and I do believe we can handle it. I really do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Albritton. And Blais Wagonbrunner, and after Mr. Wagonbrunner, we have nobody else signed up, so if somebody else would like to speak, if you'd like to start moving forward, we'll call on you. Thank you, Ms. Wagonbrunner.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Blais Wagonbrunner. I live at 1628 Bow Hill Road down in Sugar Grove. I can't embrace this budget at all, none of it. I think the first thing that should happen to this budget, you take 17% off of it, get rid of the greed, the waste, and the pork. Then you've got real money for real government. And in my house, I have two lists. One list is needs, the other list is wants. When I make a purchase, I look and see which one it means. A whole lot of wants don't get it in my house. I think there's a lot of waste in the county that needs to be cleaned up. You've got a fleet of cars that runs around here in the county, most of the time, there's one person in it running their mouth on a cell phone. It's a matter of time before we're going to get wrecked and sued. The only time you see two people in one of these cars is your inspectors. Anywhere else, it's one person. You see them in gun shops, convenience stores, drug stores, everywhere. That needs to go, that needs to be straightened up. You've got information technologies in here, you've got one and a quarter million dollars. Use it. Stop always wasting traffic around. Use this technology that you've got. A third of Montgomery County, or a third of Christiansburg, is now government buildings. We've got enough. If y'all want more buildings and more big government, I suggest y'all move up north. They've got all kinds of big buildings up there, nothing gets done. You need to worry about your legacy for the county and not your own personal legacies. And the thing that really bothers me is the bottom of this budget. The county only has $700,000 working capital. We just went through a big reassessment and a large tax hike, tax hike, and we've only got $700,000? Hey, something wrong here. We should have more money than that for capital for this county. A few other things that I don't agree with. One of them is the sheriff. You've got sheriff of the state $6 million. We don't elect a sheriff of the state, we elect a sheriff of Montgomery County. That money should go to the sheriff of Montgomery County, and they need help. I haven't got over a year or so ago when three deputies let one man get away from them. That's always bothered me, but they need the money. You take it away from this state sheriff, and if Richmond wants a state sheriff, let them pay for it. And you've got contingencies, a general contingency and a special contingency, and neither one of them's got no money in them. And then you've got down here a law library. Why should $17,600? Why should Montgomery County pay for a law library when it's just a few lawyers? If they want to use it, they pay for it. That's not right. I don't think that we should have to pay for it. School construction capital, you don't have anything for '13, but you've got 1.4 million for 2014. How do you know? You ain't even got the buildings built. How do you know you're going to need that much money? I came in here to ask for a need and a want, to put new light poles all the way around the new courthouse up there and get rid of that god-awful-looking mess and clean it up around there. It's called site landscaping. Now, I don't see no results out of my tax dollars, but if y'all was to replace them, I'd feel like I was getting something for my tax dollars. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. And as I said, there's nobody else signed up for this public hearing, but if anybody else would like to come up and speak, please come forward. That's the budget hearing, okay.
Thanks, y'all, early down at 9:31, Hightop Route, Blacksburg. And it's, some articles been in the paper here lately, one Board Supervisor said that the biggest majority of the people in Montgomery County doesn't know anything about business. So I look at it this way, when you don't worry about the money that you don't have money to pay back on, and then you add the burden to the taxpayers, somebody's not using the business way right in. That tells me they're not using common sense. Now, Mr. Creed, he always, every time I've been to a meeting, he says something about it. He always says, "Let's weigh the situation." In a way, if we've got the money to pay for it, go ahead and do it. But we're in a place now that we're right down at the bottom of the borrowing list. We're right at the top of going broke, just like the government is, they say the government is, the state is. We've got, the governor says that he, he said, "Well, we don't give the county any money." money, but the counties will figure out a way to get the extra money." So they figured out a way to get the extra money, raise the taxes on us, real soon. So then it comes up, last year, he had 120, 100, I think, $121 million surplus. And so, that money there goes. And the second one on the letter says, there's another article around town, said that they won't have the meetings early, so they can get the extra raise out of the taxpayers. When it comes out in June. Well, we used to get it first April. We used to get, I mean, first of May, we used to get our tax statements. So, if that's the case, it's already been said that the tax is gonna be raised. And the same article said that Rennet was paying 355, so if Rennet's paying 355, they make a whole lot more money than people does around here. And another thing is this, that everybody asks for raises and asks us help, for us to help pay their retirement fund. I've lived in Montgomery County all my life. I had three children to go through school. I went to Merrimack School, and Price Fork School, and the Dole Blackford High School. We never had any modern conveniences like they have now. And I'm not against that. I'm not saying anything about that. But the schools we're building now looks like a corporate research center. That's not gonna have children, remember? We have building inspectors out there, receptacle plate, a little twisted, they'll turn a house down. They'll let 'em move in, till you straighten it, receptacle plate out. We have building inspectors out there that goes out to the schools, inspect the schools. But then all of a sudden, the roof falls in. Lack of inspection. So it's a whole lot of money been wasted somewhere that no inspection is. And if my word pops, I'm gonna use the word "business," I could use it like this right here. I would say, "We do not have any money to do this. We can't keep putting on the tax dollars, tax the people." I looked at my tax statement in 1964, in the 60s. I paid $64 a year, which I probably wouldn't make it to $2 there then. Now I'm retired, I'm living on a fixed income, and now it's costing me approximately $100 a month just to live in Montgomery County, for anything that's out. My supplemental insurance went up in January. Nobody hollered about me, said, "We're gonna help you on your insurance." Nobody hollered, "Some will help you with this gas price." Nobody said, "I'm gonna help you with the grocery stores." Nobody said, "I'm gonna help you with medication." Nobody even helps me across the street. And so, this is my saying tonight is this, we can't bear the burden for everybody's retirement. We can't bear the burden for everybody's insurance. Nobody's bearing the burden for us. So if you take all our money, where does that leave us? That means that we will have to sell our house, move into a retirement center if we can, or move out of the county, just so we can survive. So I can't see, keep raising the taxes. I think somebody needs to use a little common sense, and go back and look and say, "Now, is it feasible for us just to borrow this money?" I'm not against helping anybody. I'm not against schools. My children went to school. They went to Price Fork, they went to Blackford High School. They went to there. They're doing fine. They made it through there, they graduated. And when I went to school, we had, classrooms were full. Seemed like we made it pretty fine then. I thought we made it good. I think we had it better then than we do now, from my, my, my personal opinion. But the thing about this right here is this, if we have meetings, you ask for our opinions, our opinions doesn't mean anything. We can come up here and stand and talk all night. But it's already been, when the paper states, it's already been said that the tax rate is already set, and that's what's gonna take place. Now, when somebody puts that in the paper, am I right in believing that, or I'm wrong in believing that? And if it's in the paper, one of those supervisors just in the paper here, said that people in Montgomery County doesn't know anything about business. So, we don't know anything about business.
Your time's up, sir.
Yeah, I don't. But if we don't know anything about business, who is gonna know anything about business?
We gotta get on to our next speaker. Thank you very much.
March 8:17, Montgomery Street in Blacksburg. So I've been following the budget issues for over a year now, involved in last year's budget process, and this year's, and in between. I got even more involved in the school budget process, because the school budget is such a big part of your budget. And after last year's contentious discussions and process, I expected that I would hear a lot, I'd see a lot of people involved, I would see a lot of scrutiny of the school budget, and the exposure of all this waste that I keep hearing about. And I got involved, a bunch of other parents got involved. You know, there were very, very real risks to us about having our schools closed. And so, it was in our best interest also, to find this waste and to eliminate it. And we didn't see, the basic conclusion is, we didn't see any of that. Instead, what we saw is a budget that was already been cut to the bone and beyond. We saw years of delays to urgent needs and resources the schools had. I didn't see a whole lot of involvement in this process from a lot of the people who were against the budget last year. And I really honestly, and I don't mean any disrespect, but I have yet to hear good arguments from that side about how we're gonna get more savings in the school budget. I mean, we were involved over the course of the entire year, and I know you guys are involved to some degree too, and it's just, it's not there, because it's already been cut. And I think, for those of us who have been involved and got involved, I think it became apparent that what we're really facing is not a spending problem. What we're facing is a funding problem. And it goes beyond just the schools, it applies to the county too. Ironically, it's the state that has hurt the counties and caused a lot of this through their own austerity measures. And we continue to hear from people that the solution to this is more austerity measures at the county level. And I just think that the, that our county, and our people, and our citizens deserve a lot better than that. I think that what you guys have advertised is a really good compromise. I support this year's budget for that reason. I also support it especially because it starts to put aside money for the future, and saving money for capital needs and expenditures down the road, which I definitely think the Christiansburg area's gonna need, and probably even the Shalsville area down the road. So, it's good to see that happen, so that we don't end up with something like we did last year. So, overall, I do support this budget, and I want to thank you for your investment in the future of our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live on Whipple Drive in Blacksburg. The signers of the Declaration of Independence lost, for the most part, most of them lost their lives, their fortunes, and their sacred honor. Ben Franklin told us, told, was said to have said, when he left the meeting at that time, that he was asked, "What kind of government do you give us?" And he told the person, "A republic if you can keep it." Some have said tonight that our founders would have been pushing for education. I really question whether they would have turned over in their grave, if they would see what we've done today with spending. Our country is about 17 trillion in debt. The state has many problems, and we see it in the local. We still hear people, though, asking Washington to give us money. If anything is true, we need to ask Washington to get out of our lives, as far, especially out of education, because I'm not sure that it was ever intended anyway. We need to stop looking to Washington for money and expecting money to be given to us. And the same can be said with the state, as far as getting it from Washington. The problem in Montgomery County is a spending problem, because we have built schools in such a quick and unnecessary way, in my opinion. To use Blacksburg as an example, I believe Blacksburg will open up the third new high school in 60 years, probably this fall. That's unheard of. I think the original one that was built that I went to, that was tore down needlessly, was built in the late 50s. Then the mess on Patrick Henry Drive was opened up in the 70s, and now we're getting ready to open a new one. Three high schools in a period of about 60 years. And I think we heard from a lady tonight that said that she went to a school, or knows of a school that was built in the 20s and is still under operation right now. You can go to Giles County and see Giles House, High School, which was built about the same time as Blacksburg High School, the year first one on Main Street. We have a spending problem. We let a bad situation cause people to go crazy and demand that we build a school that, from what I understand now, has gone over about 10 million over the estimated amount the last time I saw. And a lot of it is on the backs of people in the county that are on fixed incomes, or in the lower-income status, you know, in the total of all. I would urge all of you to consider this, and to have a backbone and stand up to the school board. We need to make them more accountable for the spending that they have put onto you all, because most of the budget is for schools. And in my opinion, I urge you all to vote against the 2-cent increase for the citizens of Montgomery County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good evening. Penny Franklin, 857 Woodrow Road, Christiansburg. Really hadn't planned to speak tonight, and I got here late because I had to work. I've been doing this job, the school board, for 14 years now. And this year, we sent forth a need-based budget. For many years, I would not support a budget that was not sent to you all, that was not need-based, because if we needed, we needed. And for the last several years, we've had to cut, cut, cut millions of dollars. This is not fair to our children here in Montgomery County. Public education is the equalizer. It is the equalizer. And if we're not able to pay for the equipment, the teachers, and the buildings that are needed to give our children the education that they need in the 21st century, because they're not gonna just live here in Montgomery County. Even if they just live in Montgomery County, they will be competing on a global level. That is apparent every day. You know, everybody is wired around the world, and if you're not able to understand what's going on, and how you compete with that, then you're not gonna be successful. We're not gonna be able to attract the businesses here in Montgomery County. When the issue with Blacksburg High School arose, and whether we build it or not, the folks at Virginia Tech were screaming, "You have to, you have to. We can't attract folks unless we have a good building, a good school in Blacksburg." Well, we haven't been able to attract the prime teachers that we want to attract, because the salaries are not compatible. We have a superintendent who came in and said, "As far as technology, you've got to do some catching up." And we've been trying to do that, and she has put things in place that are just remarkable. If anyone would walk into our schools, who have been turned into 21st-century schools, and see how these children interact, and how these children are able to use their minds on a whole different level. This is not 1930. This is 2013. So I support this budget. I think you all have done a great job of being creative of how you do it. You know, I'm like everyone else. I pay taxes, and when I looked at my escrow shortage, you know, I was a bit taken back too. But it didn't take me 10 seconds to realize, okay, you know, I'm gonna have to suck this up and figure out somehow or another how I do this, because I know there are children out there who need to have the resources in the school system to make sure that they're learning. We can no longer teach in a cookie-cutter manner. We have children, children who are at all levels, and we need to make sure that they're getting the education that they need. And you can't do that by just sitting a bunch of kids in an overcrowded classroom and open the book and say, "Okay, you all learn." You have to analyze, you have to look at what's going on and make sure they're successful, because we've been mandated by the state and by the federal government as to how we have to perform. And just as soon as these schools aren't performing, then they're coming and saying, "You're not doing your job." Well, unless you have what you need to do your job, you can't do it. And as far as the other needs in the county, you know, I was involved with the Sheriff's Department when they first started their Citizens Academy, and my eyes were wide-opened as to the needs there, and with our fire and rescue, and all the other services that we enjoy. Because if they went away, you know, some of us would not be real happy with that. There are some areas that folks don't understand about the business of running a county. And time's about up, but I appreciate the work that you all do, and I hope that you will support the budget that is before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. Is there anybody else who would like to address this public hearing? Seeing no one, we will close our public hearing on the tax rate. And if we can take about a ten or so-minute break, then we'll move on to the budget hearing. Thank you very much. All right, the next portion of our public hearing is on the advertised budget. We have three people signed up to speak. And the first one being Kelly Cass. She'll please come forward. And following Ms. Cass is Bruce Stanger.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me this time to come and speak. My name is Kelly Cass. I'm the executive director of Mountain View Humane. And we have asked for funding for subsidies for low-cost spay and neuter. Mountain View has provided over 12,750 low-cost spay and neuters since we've opened in 2010. So in the last two and a half years, we've done almost 13,000 animals at our Christiansburg clinic alone, not counting what we do at our Rennet Clinic as well. We strive to sterilize any dog or cat, regardless of the owner's ability to pay. And our community needs to continue to address that, as the overpopulation problem we still face it. We face it every day. Last year, we did receive a subsidy from the county for $30,000. We're very appreciative of that. We used that money to help fix over 1,226 animals. That's a lot of cats, kind of. We actually have fixed over 4,200 cats that live in Montgomery County, and we still haven't made a dent. If you don't have a cat story, I'm gonna bet you know someone who does. And we love to hear the stories every day of how pets find their owners, and how people find their new members of the family. But in a lot of cases, these aren't even members of the family. In a lot of cases, it's as simple of, "Hey, this cat crawled under my porch and dropped five kittens. What do I do?" We get that question more often than we care to say. And so, our answer, when we had this funding, was, "Hey, there's not a shelter in Montgomery County for cats, but here's what your county can do to help you, and we're here to help you achieve that." And people received it happily. The impact that that fund had on those 1,200 animals, and the thousand or so people who brought them in, was great and important to them. Every year, we strive to improve our services and increase our numbers, and we do continue to do that. I think with the 30,000, we had originally intended to only do 1,067 cats, based on what we thought we would have to use per animal, and we were able to actually increase that by an extra 158 animals thereabout. So we went from 1,067, and we were able to fix 1,226. And so that's, that we felt like was a show on our side, that we certainly have done everything we can do to utilize donated dollars, subsidy dollars, to the best of our ability. We also like to point out, every chance that we get, that funding spay and neuter through us or through any other source, for any locality, is a fiscally responsible thing to do. For the price it costs to subsidize one spay and neuter, is at less than a fourth the cost to care for one homeless animal. And so you can help four or five animals for the same price as housing, rehoming, or euthanizing just one animal. National statistics show that for a locality to subsidize four animals, will keep two or three animals out of the shelter over time, which can be that huge savings that we're all looking for in our county budget. So we would ask that this year, once again, Montgomery County would support Mountain View Humane, to whatever level you see fit as our board of supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cass. Bruce Stanger, and he'll be Bruce Stanger, and he'll be followed by Connie Froggett.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I don't have a prepared speech. I just thought I'd come up. First off, Bruce Stanger, 2159 Pepper's Ferry Road, Christiansburg. Just thought I'd come and talk to y'all tonight and let you know that with this budget, it's a lot of wants. We just heard one. It may be a viable cause, but it's not a tax dollar funded thing. We've got to be fiscally responsible. And I put the burden of that on the board of supervisors. You manage the money. The money is not yours, it's the taxpayers'. You have to be fiscally responsible for that money. And that's what we need y'all to do and that's what I'm asking you to do. But we just can't spend forever want that we have, that the county has that these wonderful projects need. The schools want more and more. But we have to be fiscally responsible and that is your responsibility to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanger. Ms. Froggett?
Hello, my name is Connie Froggett. I live at 1751 Brush Mountain Creek Road in Montgomery County. I also did not prepare anything tonight. I wasn't really planning to speak and Joe told me I had to and then he left. So, first of all, I want to clear up a fantasy I heard tonight. As the parent representative on the building committee for Blacksburg High School, I would like to assure you that neither Blacksburg High School, Auburn High School or Auburn Middle School are $10 million over budget. They are well within budget and on schedule. Now granted, we might open with a few rooms not finished, but things are still looking good. I was just in there two weeks ago. And I can show you rooms that are already fully painted on my iPad. So I don't know where this rumor is coming from, but it is completely false. And I was there the day that we cut and cut and cut the square footage on Blacksburg High School so we could do, as Supervisor Tuck has said, "Live within our means." And we did it. And we're gonna be opening a nice, efficient high school. It is not a Taj Mahal. It does not have a granite fountain. The other thing I'd like to talk about, by the way, I have a stray cat too. Hannah rescue dog. I graduated high school in 1981 and swore I'd never set foot in a public school again. I was the daughter of a plumber and electrician who did not graduate from high school. He was too busy holly moonshine in Franklin County to finish school. But then I got married and I had kids and I was very fortunate. We trimmed our budget and I was able to stay home with my kids. And then after a few years, I didn't have anything to stay home with anymore. They had gone to school. So I went back to school as a volunteer over 12 years ago. And I have been there ever since. I have seen the good times and I have seen the bad times. And we are in some very bad times. Last year, I donated an entire cart of paper to Harding Avenue Elementary because they ran out by this time last year. That's how our schools are hurting. We are 13 years into the 21st century and we still don't have schools with 21st century technology. And that's a minimum standard. That's not highfalutin', "Every kid has an iPad." I've visited schools where every kid has an iPad. As part of our tour on the building committee, we went to Northern Virginia and DC schools, places where they have built a high school, for example, in Loudoun County every year for the past 10 years. And you think we're building schools fast? We're barely keeping up. And the thought that we have no growth in Blacksburg? This year, our school opened with 70 more kids than we had last year. And if you look at the rolls coming up, it's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger. I would not be surprised if that school was at capacity in 10 years. Fortunately, we designed it with the ability to expand at minimal cost, up to 1,600. So we are not wasting your money. Our teachers are not overpaid. I have watched them many times pull a few dollars out of their pocket at the book fair for some child who could not afford to buy their own book. And I know they were struggling to buy books for their own children, never mind the ones in their classroom. So I just want to assure you that in my 12-plus years in the classroom as a volunteer, as PTA, PTO president, on the educational foundation, as a girl scout leader, I've seen kids go through all kinds of things in this county. But I have not seen waste in our schools. I've seen our teachers doing amazing things. And they deserve better and our children deserve better. And we've talked about, one of the speakers spoke about our legacy. Our legacy is sitting in our public schools and we need to remember that. Two of the best ways to get out of poverty are good health care and education. And we need both of those. Obviously, I support this budget and the tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Froggett. There is nobody else signed up for this public hearing. If anybody else would like to come and speak, please step forward. Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing. And I appreciate everybody coming this evening and we appreciate all your comments. And I believe on the 15th.
We will have a regular board of supervisors meeting on April the 8th, which will have a work session to talk about the budget with the board that evening. And then the budget and tax rate are scheduled to be voted on by the board, if they're ready to do so, on Monday, April 15th.
Thank you all for coming.